Still here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor and I.
Present.
Mayor Plaguta.
Present.
We have a Cora Mayor.
Thanks ma'am. Moving right on, item 3A is PVPL Spotlight Annual Report. Usually like walk-up music starts.
Mayor, council, Aunt Fatima, congratulations. I'm so happy. She's awesome. So, here we go. All right, so we have our 2019-2020 Spotlight. It's in a weird format. So here we have the letter from the director. Well, that's me, lots of words. However, if you read it, you've taken it to heart and you know that we had a rough start. Well, in February. We were off to a great start and then February, money issues happened and COVID hit and we had to shut down. There's a saying that is popular in library land that cutting libraries in a recession is like cutting hospitals during a pandemic. And we're unfortunately in both of those. More than 90% of libraries across the US closed their doors. But thankfully, we had our drive-up. We had the ability to take phone calls from the community. We signed up patrons virtually with library cards. We did virtual storytimes, virtual senior center visits. And our Public Library Association president says, "Time and time again, public libraries have demonstrated resiliency during times of crisis and always find a way to lift and support our communities." And that is exactly what we did. Even though we were closed for almost two and a half months, we had our drive-up window, which was, we were literally, I got mad at a patron because he was honking and yelling at staff and I said, "Well, maybe you ought to go to another library." But we didn't have another one, it was just us. So, yes, we were the only library in Yavapai County and throughout the United States, in the state of Arizona that opened back up on May 6th. We had some limited services, but we continued to do social distancing. We had computers available, which the community now, we continuously have wait lists for the use of our computers. We're not sure what business as usual will look like through the rest of the year. However, you know, we continue to take it day by day and do the best we can to provide amazing services to our community. And I have to say, our staff is amazing and they have worked hard. They have taken some abuse from our community members unfortunately, but they are resilient and they provide amazing service still. Great customer service and I work with an amazing group of people. I cannot stress that enough. So, some of our highlights, of course, last year we had our Fantomania. We had over 300, 3,500 people show up and we knew we had outgrown the library. We were going to move on to the event center, but unfortunately, we couldn't. Fantomania is my favorite. We had some great people. We had the most participation with vendors. Shannon Shinagel, our community engagement librarian, went out into the community and rallied support with give cards and prizes and our businesses were just like, "Here, take it." I mean, we had like over 35 raffle prizes to give away to the community. And it really is our favorite event and I'm sad that we couldn't have it this year. But Shane and I, we're talking for next year, so we got that event center. Grants, of course. Our Wi-Fi hotspots were extremely important while we were shut down. We had huge waiting lists for those. I only wish we could have purchased more, but we couldn't. Our friends at the library, even though we were closed those two and a half months, they still were able to bring in over $16,000 for us for materials and services. And again, the community impact of our drive-up window was amazing. And what's, just some fun facts here. In February, we averaged about 868 people in our drive-up window. March, we went up to 1,800. April, 3,700 people we served. And May, over 6,100 people we served at our drive-up window. And that's when we've been open. So, the community where we've had the drive-up windows since 2013, we promoted the heck out of it, but it took a pandemic for them to use it unfortunately, so.
How they know it's there?
I know. I, of course, we get, I like some fries with that. I want to point out that our volunteers, again, even though we're closed for two and a half months and we didn't want volunteers in the building, literally, we have volunteers who are 65 and older. Even LMA, my most favorite, who's 92, was wanting to come back. We're like, "No, LMA, stay home." But we still had over 189 volunteers provide over 11,000 hours in service. And that equals Larry's savings, ding ding ding, over $148,000 in monetary value if you had to pay employees, so. So we have some stats. We know stats are important. However, I just want to point out, again, even though we're closed for two and a half months, our stats did not go down as bad as I thought they would. Our circulations were just down about 10,000. So considering the amount of people that we had going through the drive-through, that certainly helped. Our website view page went up considerably, almost doubled. Our door count, again, not too bad. Patron registration, just down 1,000. I will say, we did beat Prescott last month in new users, but they were closed, so what can I say? We need more money. Program attendance is, we had, it seems like, wow, we had a lot of programs, but we didn't because we did a lot of things virtually. We had Spanish storytimes, we had storytimes, we had videos of us running around the library trying to engage our community to show that we're still there, we still appreciate you, we want you to value what we provide here. And last but not least, our Yavapai Library Network, which is a huge supporter and we couldn't do half of what we do without them. A lot of, those of you who don't know, the YLN is a consortium of 43 public academic school and museum libraries in county. The consortium allows members to access over 1 million items. And the Yavapai County Free Library District continues to contribute yearly funds to the library for materials and operations. So, we received, the number of items sent, so over 20,000, 23,000 of our materials went to other libraries and we received over 55,000 items from any, all the other libraries. So it's a considerable service that they provide. And the county has provided us over $343,000 for library services and operations, so we appreciate the county on that. So, that's all I have. We had a great year considering and I am optimistic that we'll continue to move forward and provide whatever type of innovative services we need to do to change and hook up with our community. And that's it.
Nicely done ma'am. Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 3B, Proposed Revision to Water and Wastewater Rates, Fees and Charges. Welcome sir.
I want to also say congratulations to Fatima and that's an honor.
Thank you.
Congratulations, big time. So here is, end of the summer, I'm here to talk about my normal annual report on water and sewer rates. Some of you who've been here longer might have this memorized just like I do. So what is the purpose of our water and sewer rate? Water and sewer rates are based on the cost of service, so we need to make sure that we have that established amount to recover what is put into it to basically produce that service to the customers. We have two points that we have to maintain when it comes to bonds and policies. One, for the bond, we have to maintain a certain coverage. That way, it basically guarantees that bond and the repayment of it. And then also town policy, we have to make sure that we meet and exceed that policy in order to pay that bond. And lastly, we need to make sure that we're charging the correct amount for what we're producing for the customers. So the current water structure is based on a fixed monthly charge. Two factors that are going to decide that is the meter size, so the bigger the meter you have, the bigger base fee is going to have, and then also the customer class. Currently, all of our classes are priced at the same amount, whether you're commercial, residential, multifamily, contractor, hydrant, it's all one rate based on volume. We currently charge at 1,000 gallons usage, so we will round down to that nearest thousand in order to produce that bill. That is also based on a tiered conservation rate, so we have three different tiers. The more you use, the more you're going to pay. Tier one, which is pretty much every resident is going to start in, or all of our tiers, all of our customers will start in that. And the more water by thousands of gallons you use, they'll jump up to the next tier, which is a little bit higher price, and then the third tier, which is our highest-priced one. Currently, if a residential, single-family home was to be billed for 6,000 gallons, the water side of that bill is going to be $27.48. It's going to be the same thing based on the sewer rate. That structure is based on the water meter size. Little tidbit, we don't meter sewer, pretty much nowhere does. That's going to be based on a winter quarter average that we establish every November through March. We take everyone's five-month average, multiply that by 90%, and that will establish their sewer rate for the coming year. On the sewer side, the average amount is 4,000 gallons. The sewer side of the bill would be a charge of $23.23. The factors that go into this calculation, we take the budget here, the proposed budget, so everyone just finished that. We got, Katie and I got these numbers solidified with that approval. That's one of the factors that goes in. The debt service, so those bonds, existing bonds that we have, go into that factor. So that gives us that revenue requirement, basically the floor that we have to meet in order to keep rates where they're at. On the rate side, we have to project gallons, so Katie and I pull out our magic ball and we look to see, how much rain are we going to get next July? How much, how much snow are we going to get in December? Everyone's blaming us right now because we underestimated or overestimated. And then also the number of customers. We take those, wrap those all together, we have that rate requirement divided by the rate and that determines our price per thousand gallons based on those projected numbers. We do have to make some assumptions when we do these projections. The number of customer, percentage of customer growth on the water side, right now Prescott Valley is building, so we have a little bit higher number than some years. Operating expenses, what it costs for us to produce it, personnel services, the number of customers, our projected gallons built, so we're looking at a little over 1.7 billion gallons in the next coming year. And then also meeting the operational budgets and bond ratios and debt service coverages. So on this five-year projection, we have a few things that we look at. Biggest one is the cash reserve ratio. We are required to maintain 25%. Looking at that, 204% this year, 103% next year, we're very handsomely above that. The reason why we have some projects, I'm sure Neil could talk your ear off about tanks and wells and all that, and maybe he will later, he's back there. But we have to factor those in in order for us to be able to pay for those when it is needed to add those to the system. So the results of taking all those factors into consideration, our calculation did call for a little bit more than a half a percent increase, or about two cents per each tier. We always operate with about a 1% margin of error. So if you guys remember, last year, we had about a call, we had a call for about a 0.6% decrease, so we offset that knowing that things can fluctuate, which they do, so we're taking that same projection this year. Even though it's calling for a very small increase, we're not going to propose that we do that increase. So we are proposing that there is no change to the water rates. On the sewer side, we make those same assumptions. Our sewer customer base is growing, personnel expenses, operating expenses, number of gallons billed and maintaining that bond coverage. On the sewer side, we do see that cash reserve ratio is significantly higher on this side, 400%, 300%. That is in plans for future wastewater treatment expansion, sewer line infrastructure, all that. We do still have the motivation to cash fund that when it does come up, so we have that planned ahead for the future to hopefully do that. Same results on the sewer side. We do have a less than 1% increase called for. We're going to use that margin of error again. And with that, staff is proposing no change to the sewer rates again this year.
With that, any comments or questions?
Vice Mayor.
You get to go home and really relax tonight.
I think ultimately, the citizens just care about one thing, right?
In the end.
In the end, right? That bottom line.
Yes.
And they'll be happy to hear that nothing changes.
Third year in a row.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's terrific. So nicely done and Katie nicely done. Anything else, council?
I don't know if I should mention this or not, but I know so many people must have been worried during the beginning of the COVID with the toilet paper shortage. I kept wondering, it goes somewhere. So I'm really glad to know that we don't have an increase in any of the rates right now, so that's awesome. Thank you.
I'm a little bit curious on why the growth rate is higher on water usage than it is on sewer usage.
That's a good point.
Just, just an observation.
Construction water.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just ask.
Inquiring minds want to know.
That's a wonderful question, actually.
You know, it's like a pipe.
Yep.
If there's no other questions, thank you sir.
Thank you guys very much.
Move on, item 3C, Proposed Ray Jenkins Memorial Spray Pad.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Real quickly, Mr. Raymond Jenkins was a master sculptor and artist and a World War II pilot who passed away on June 3rd, 2020. His trust includes a generous bequest to the town and an estimated amount of $500,000. The trustee has indicated Mr. Jenkins wanted the funds to be used for lasting community projects. Therefore, the Parks and Recreation Commission was tasked with recommending to the town council a project that would qualify. On August 11th, 2020, the commission met and considered the surveys and analysis recently involved in developing the most recent Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The plan noted three key locations, Civic Center, Bob Edwards Park and Antelope Park. After consideration, the commission concluded that the spray pad in Antelope Park would be the best option due to serving a growing area of the town and being adjacent to schools, multi-use paths and main roadways. The town manager has previously encouraged a spray pad as a project, including the town would add an additional $100,000 to the $250,000 of the Jenkins bequest. The commission also recommended that Antelope Park be renamed Raymond Jenkins Park and an alternative location would be Bob Edwards Park. I have some information tonight about spray pads and splash pads if you'd like that information.
Sounds good.
The naming of it is always something that has to be done. Mr. Ray Jenkins has been named as the Memorial Spray Pad Splash Pad Site. It is our recommendation that we move forward with that naming. What is a splash pad? It comes in many different sizes and shapes and they come with lots of varieties of water features. Most of it's spray nozzles, some of it's dumping buckets, dancing water, things of that nature. They've become very popular in the last 10 years and several municipalities are choosing to add spray pads and splash pads instead of pools. It's just less to maintain than a swimming pool and it offers an opportunity to recreate that doesn't have to be lifeguarded the entire time. Location, we do have a few locations that we have discussed. They each come with their own unique set of challenges. Excellent word. Going forward, and I can discuss those with you at depth if you'd like tonight. Capacity, well, you know, as you build for more, your cost goes up as you get bigger. So we have to determine what type of capacity that we're looking to do. Are we looking for, to put 50 kids on at a time, 100 participants at a time? So that's something that's got to be determined. Parking, is there going to be adequate parking or do we need to discuss the additional parking to be added to the site? Something that is very concerning is utilities. We have to do an analyzation of the infrastructure to see if the domestic water, the storm water and wastewater and power is adequate at the site, or if we need to do some updating to the locations. Water use, we got to talk about if we want to go with a flow-through, single-use system or a research system in chlorinating the water. What do we want to do in the sense of what would be best for the community, what would be best, you know, and most budgetarily acceptable going forward for operating cost? Surfacing, I can tell you that we have a Pebble Flex service at the splash pad at Mountain Valley Park right now. It doesn't hold up well in our current environment. Something about the chemicals, the extreme heat to the extreme cold part that we deal with sometimes of the year causes expansion and shrinking and we start to have a lot of flaking. So it's something that we need to revisit every few years and doing patchwork and repairs. And then our operating and maintenance cost. What are we expecting to do in each year? You know, we're going to need to add some water into the budget for those type of things and what are we looking at operating to maintain it? I am more than happy to answer any questions that you have tonight. This is really just an opportunity to ask questions of me, for me to get some ideas from you, so that we can move forward with the preliminary planning. Some of the preliminary planning, we have seen some plans. They are, I want to stress, very preliminary. Bob Edwards Park, being an example, was a, they were 750 square foot, was what they were showing us. And the reason that it was 750 square foot was because of the cost of the infrastructure upgrades may absorb a lot of the money. Antelope Parks was 2,150 square foot, substantially bigger. However, we've got some concerns at Antelope Park based on the wastewater lines and that we may not be adequate to hold, to accept the amount of wastewater coming from a splash pad that size. So it's something that we're going to have to look further into. So, love to hear your ideas, love to hear your comments, and I will take those forward as I put this plan together and bring you back something that I can show you that meets all of your requests.
Yeah, I think this is a huge start, Jason, which is, which is great to hear. I know a lot of people are interested in the direction of this whole project. I think ultimately, if you could come back to council at some point and just say, "Hey, this is Plan A, this is what it looks like, like how you described size." Because, I mean, 750 square feet, I mean, my deck at my house is bigger than that, you know? So that's not a, that's not that great when we're thinking about trying to service the community the best way possible, so. And then added features, I think that's something we need to definitely consider and you're right, there are pros and cons to each location, you know? Originally, I thought, I know I was speaking with Mr. Tarkowski about how great it would be to have one between the police department and the civic center.
I'm sorry.
So, but then the challenges arise with restrooms and would we have white kids going in and out of the bathrooms? So, at the court, I don't think they would really want to see that. So I think everything comes with different pros and cons and I know through Facebook and getting the responses from the citizens, an overwhelming number, and when I say overwhelming, I'm talking 600, 700 people have responded that Bob Edwards Park would be ideal for them. There are concerns that come up, of course, with parking, which I get, I totally understand that. So I think we would just have to get basically the pros and cons analysis from parks and I think that would give council a much, much better idea of
Absolutely.
the direction to go, so.
Okay.
And then just to touch on the Raymond Jenkins Park name, this is a tremendous appreciation to the Jenkins family and I think naming the splash pad itself is a great honor.
Absolutely.
And we don't need to go to the lengths of renaming it an entire park.
Okay.
So I think that's something, at least my personal opinion when it comes to the level or the honor that goes with a park. And I think of Bob Edwards Park and the significance of naming that park after Mr. Edwards is pretty serious and we shouldn't take that lightly.
Absolutely.
And if I could comment on that, we have a number of rules, protocols for park naming as well as park facility naming. And the spray pad would certainly fall under the guidelines to be named after the benefactor, Mr. Jenkins, but he would not end up qualifying for an entire park renaming. And so that would be very consistent with what we have shared with the trustee, is that anything that is using his money would end up having a commemorative plaque on those particular items, meaning the two sculptures and the spray pad, which is very appropriate.
Absolutely. Council?
I did have one question. Would there be any chance of adding this to the backside of the new Santa Fe Park? As on the other side of all the fields, there's a whole continuum clear over to Tuscany Road. That's why I was thinking, there's a big blank slate over there.
It can definitely be inspected. Again, we need to just look at the infrastructure that's there, wastewater lines, I'd need to get with utilities and discuss what we can do with the water. And I believe that we have a three-inch main currently feeding the park over there and we should be able to more than adequately supply a spray pad, depending on how many gallons per minute they call for. Currently, the preliminary is that 100 gallons per minute at Bob Edwards and 150 gallons per minute at Antelope. So there's definitely an opportunity to look at that.
I'm just thinking, it's a nice blank slate right now and it could become an honor just unto its own without taking away from some other, it wouldn't be an addition per se then, it would be like a complete new project. I realize that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
The first remark I want to make is, I would be very upset if we changed Bob Edwards Park. Many of us here now had the opportunity to serve with him.
It wouldn't be for the renaming of Bob Edwards, it was for Antelope Park.
I know, but I just want to make a point. When it's named after a person, we have a different issue. And you jump the gun. When it's not named after someone we're memorializing, it shouldn't be difficult to change some of the others. That's the only point. And I just want to say this, I personally trust you and your staff. I certainly have no skills in this area to be making any decisions until you had an opportunity to do all your homework and I personally will trust your judgment and I'm excited about all of it.
Thank you.
Anyone? Councilman?
Yeah, I apologize for laughing, but the minute you said that, I pictured Larry running through the splash pad in the middle of the summer. All right, now to serious stuff. Water, you mentioned that there's a couple of choices and I know the minute someone sees a splash pad and all this water running continuously
sees a splash pad and all this water running continuously, the first thing they're going to think is we're wasting a lot of water. So, my, I would consider definitely doing a recirculation and add a chlorine or fluoridation or whatever, whatever sanitary needs are there to make sure that the water is okay for the, our kids and the community to be running through.
Okay.
So, that would be, that would definitely be something to consider. And other than that, I think it's a great idea and whatever plan you come up with, I'm sure it's going to be a good one and I can't wait to see where you go with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, what's the timeline you're thinking on trying to gather all the intel?
I would like to have it out to bid in October and have construction begin at the beginning of next year with an opening sometime in April or May.
Great. And I know, I'm sure many parents out there just realized also, it didn't have to be very elaborate because basically a garden hose strung from a tree will keep kids happy for many, many days, so.
We'll definitely put together several plans with research and a flow-through, give it all, present it all to you so we can have a look at it. We're going to be asking for design bid, design build process, so we can give all that information to you at a time and you can review that.
Great.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to point out your timing is perfection because the obelisk, which is going to be named after him, will be finished in May.
Wonderful.
So, we're really getting a good, tight calendar here.
And Jason, if we could just hopefully maybe get with Latoya and try to get some feedback through
Sure.
... the Facebook page or, I don't know, however you think would be best to elicit comments.
And I've looked at the Facebook page myself and I completely understand the desire for Bob Edwards Park and its location. Some of the things that are concerning is we have a hydrometer on our, on our water line there, we have a six-inch water line. We installed hydrometers based on a grant from Bureau of Reclamation. A hydrometer only allows water to flow through during the time of irrigation. It also tracks if there's a leak and it tells us and we can go and work on it. If we were to install a Bob Edwards and tap the six-inch line, we're going to have a concern of we would render the meter useless because it would have to be open 24 hours a day. So, we may have to consider getting another water meter, then there's some impact fees in that. So, we want to see what we can do on making this work without putting all of our money into the infrastructure and building a splash pad that is adequately sized for the community and can be used.
Ultimately, at the end of the day, just being as a, speaking as a parent, if I was to drive my children to Bob Edwards, I would still drive my children to Antelope to utilize that
Okay.
... that thing and I think a lot of parents would see it that way. Is it a centralized location? Is it close to, hopefully knock on wood, the new YMCA that we will be building? Is that something we take into consideration as well?
Correct.
There's a, there's a lot of questions, but I think once we gather a little bit more information, we'll just make what's best for the community.
Absolutely.
Councilman?
Well, it sounds to me like, once you get all the information, it's going to become painfully obvious where this should go, just based on the, the water availability, the sewer availability and what we have to do and the cost. It's going to fit some parameter and it's going to be very obvious, I think. I don't think we're going to have to make much in the way of decisions
Okay.
... from, from everything you're saying anyway. And that's only a guess based on what I'm hearing.
Understood.
But, you know, there's a lot of things that, that play into this and it's going to be obvious, I think, to us. So, you know, you're doing a good job, you're off to a good start, so
Thank you.
Just keep up the good work. You've got the right frame of mind going into this, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're saying he's all washed up.
Awesome. Thanks, Jason.
All right. Have a good evening. And Fatima?
Proud of you.
Thank you.
Moving on, item 3D, Matt Force presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to speak a little bit about the partnerships that we have built through the police department, some of those outstanding programs that we've developed. In the town of Prescott Valley, it's, we're not immune to the use and sale of illicit drugs. Since becoming your chief, I have noticed a steady level of usage and sale within our community. Furthermore, law enforcement leaders have noticed a troubling trend of overdose victims within our county. Since October of 2019, the town of Prescott Valley has had 54 reported overdoses, of which 14 individuals have died. 38 have survived due to law enforcement and medical intervention. The key to making an impact in this is to involve the community and to build partnerships with organizations like Matt Force. Matt Force has been in existence in Yavapai County since 2005 as a result of a rampant methamphetamine problem within our county. Matt Force Coalition consists of a board of directors led by tonight's speaker, Mary Lee Fowler. It consists of many law enforcement leaders to include the Prescott area and the Verde area steering committees. They also work with work groups, volunteers, and supporters who work to accomplish common goals for all citizens and communities within Yavapai County. I'll now introduce Mary Lee from Matt Force, who will provide you with an updated information on their organization.
Thank you so much. I'm going to pull up a power.
Welcome, ma'am.
So, I just want to say thank you to all of you for having an interest in learning more about what's happening with substance abuse issues in our county. And I know that when Commander Edelstein sent an email and there's, you're going to have a great group of different speakers that you're going to be hearing, it sounds like over the next few, few weeks. And it's an honor to tell you a little bit about Matt Force. When I first wrote back to him and I said, do you want to hear about Matt Force or do you want to hear about the overdose fatality review board or do you want to hear about Prop 207 and what's happening with legalization? And he just wrote back, sounds good, because I was thinking maybe one of the three? And I knew that you guys don't want me to talk too long, so I'm going to go fairly quick through some things and, and then hopefully I can answer any questions. And as the chief mentioned, we are a 501(c)(3) organization, but more importantly, we're a coalition. And the beauty of Matt Force is that we work with all different sectors of the community to come up with ideas and have people that are willing to implement those ideas to reduce substance abuse in our, in our county. And it's taken us a lot of different directions from simply providing information on the risks and harms of substance abuse issues, all the way to changing policies. We actually work at the state legislature and try to get laws changed that we think are important, so it takes us a lot of different directions. But I don't ever like to talk about Matt Force without mentioning that prevention is our number one focus. And that's really where our heart is, is that we want to do everything that we can to convince kids to never begin to abuse drugs or alcohol. And so, that's why we're very thankful for the schools in our county. HUSD has been a wonderful partner of ours and they let us in their classroom. And we have a whole host of curriculums that we do for students kindergarten through 12th grade. And that's very important to us, that we can do everything that we can think of again to convince children, you know, of the, of the true risks and harms of these drugs. It's also really important to us that we support recovery and treatment and we do that in a lot of different ways, through like recovery celebrations and we do a lot of trainings on evidence-based treatments and, and a lot of different things. And I just wanted to briefly mention a project that I hope you guys have all heard of, that we started in 2012 called the Yavapai Reentry Project. And that was an idea that somebody had and we thought, you know what, we can, even though we didn't have money for it, we thought we can make this happen. And what the idea was, is that we would help people that are returning home from the Department of Corrections to Yavapai County and through a community coach. And so, right now, we have 60 volunteer community coaches that work one-on-one with individuals returning home from the Department of Corrections and also the jail. And what they do is they help them with goals that they've set for themselves, whether it's to find a place to live, to find a job, if they need to be connected with treatment, whatever it is, they come alongside them and help them. And our goal with that is to keep our community safer and to help those people to not reoffend. It's, it's, it's hard to explain, Matt Force, because there's a lot of different components, but I thought maybe just this bullet point list would give you an idea of different projects that we're currently working on. And like everybody else, COVID hit us really hard. We had to cancel again. We were, I mentioned being in the schools, even with the schools closing in March, we were in front of over 10,000 kids before they closed. But, you know, we had to look at everything that we did and went into the virtual world. So, one of the things that we have coming up on September 14th is our third annual Arizona Drug Summit that we actually do down in Phoenix. We have about 500 people that attend that. We already have 500, about 500 people that have registered to attend it virtually this year. It's free if anybody's interested in hearing a great list of speakers. We'd love to have you participate with that. With the reentry project that I mentioned, we try to educate people and family members about the challenges that they're going to be experiencing when their loved one comes back from prison. And so, we do training several times a year called From Inmate to Citizen. And we actually just did one of those last night virtually and had people that, that, you know, again, have people that are returning home to understand the complications of that process. Mental health first aid is an evidence-based curriculum that we have a trained person and she got trained to do it virtually, so we're continuing to do that. Our parenting classes, we're doing virtually when we can. Our coach trainings, if anyone orders a pizza, I don't know if you've ever heard of, but we do a youth contest where, where kids draw art and it's, we just delivered that to all of the pizza restaurants. And so, for the next couple of weeks, if you order a pizza, we're hoping that that'll be on top of the box. We have a pharmacy team that is medical professionals that help us with our prescription drug problem in our county and helping doctors to realize how important it is to have proper prescribing. And so, we just finished a new pain management tapering document that we're sending out to all the medical communities. And I, I can keep going, but just to give you an idea, there's a lot of things that we've continued to do and, and just always are looking for ways that we can reduce substance abuse in our county and it takes us a lot of different directions. So, I'm going to keep going because I want to tell you a little bit about our overdose fatality review board. And this was an idea, Laura Lee, you were probably there, because she's been a wonderful Matt Force person ever since I've been involved for the last 14 years and before I wasn't involved. But in, we, we got together because in 2016, we were really concerned about the heroin problem in Yavapai County with, you know, the number of overdose deaths increasing and it was just becoming a real serious problem. So, we started talking about what can we do to address that particular problem? And somebody came up with the idea that we should really review overdose deaths and see if we can come up with recommendations and changes that we could make to possibly prevent those deaths. So, since 2016, we've been reviewing overdose deaths and we do that by getting the medical examiner's report, getting the police report, and then doing a family interview when the family is willing to talk to us. And we, we track commonalities and really try to understand, you know, what that person was experiencing, the type of treatment or if that they did receive or maybe didn't receive and, and just learn as much as we can. And so, we've gained a lot of different information over the last few years and come up with a lot of different recommended policy changes and changes and things that we can implement through that process. And if anyone's interested in learning more, we, on the Matt Force website, we have actually reports that we've put out with these recommendations. But the sad news, as the chief mentioned, is that overdose deaths in our county are going up at a very substantial rate. And just to understand how much they're going up, from 2018 to 2019, we had a 45% increase. So, in 2019, we had 68 either unintentional or accidental overdose deaths. And, excuse me, or sometimes they will list it as undetermined, so the medical examiner will consider it. But these are not suicides by drugs there, where, you know, unintentional deaths. And so, so far in the first six months of this year through, I guess, July 15th, so six and a half months, we've had 45 deaths. So, again, we know that we're still on that upward climbing and it's just, it's really sad. And what we've learned is it's from people from all different walks of life. With the 45 deaths, we had 31 male and 14 females. The age range goes from 17 to 68. Fentanyl, as you all know, is a horrible problem. And to really look at how that is, is causing the problem is to look at the percentage increase. In 2019, it was only in 10 deaths, it was 15% of the deaths. Now, so far in 2020, it's again with the 22 deaths, that's 48% have fentanyl listed as a cause of death. And it's, it's just really heartbreaking to see what's happening with that drug. We started on meth, as the chief said, and meth has come back with a vengeance. We've had 16 of the 45 deaths where meth was listed as the cause of the death. And I just wanted to mention this because I think it's a little known fact that in, since two, in the last year, so in 2019, we had one death and in 2020, we had, we've had two deaths where it was actually lung injury from inhalation of vaping THC. So, that's something that's a concern and we want people to know. I had 12 deaths in Prescott Valley, but the chief said 14, so that's probably two more since July 15th that we didn't have the record of. So, they're all over our county, as you can see. So, so there's a lot more I could tell you about the work of the overdose fatality review board, but I just want to end the time that I have telling you a little bit about Prop 207 that will be on the ballot in November and it will be to legalize recreational marijuana. It's a big concern of Matt Force again, because when we talk about trying to prevent, we know it increases the supply, it increases social norming, it decreases perception of risk, all the things that we try to do to combat kids from using a drug. Legalization does the opposite. So, it's the Smart and Safe Initiative, it's going to be Prop 207. It's 17 pages of small font and we all know that in the state of Arizona, when you pass an initiative, every single word becomes state law. And that's something that people don't realize when, because when they're reading that little 100-word description, it's hard to know everything that's in the initiative. It was brought to Arizona by the medical marijuana industry because they're basically forming a monopoly that's, that when we, if we do pass this law, they'll have the first dibs on their medical marijuana dispensary becoming a site to sell recreational marijuana. And you can see the amount of money that they put in so far just to get the signatures, well over $3 million. So, what this initiative will do is it will legalize marijuana up to one ounce of marijuana, the leafy substance. So, if people don't realize that this, this actually, depending on the size of a joint that you would roll, is 60 to 200 joints would be legal to possess. It also would legalize up to five grams of marijuana concentrate. And this is, the main way that people now use marijuana is the extracted THC. They either vape it or put it in edible products and so, it would be legal to have up to five grams of, and this can be very, very potent. It's something important for us to realize that they do, in the initiative, limit edibles, but these, again, with vaping pure THC, you can have up to 99% potency, which is a very dangerous drug. We call it crack marijuana, so that is going to be legal in our state. It'll allow people to grow marijuana. You can grow six plants if you are one adult in your home and 12 plants if there are two adults in your home. And I wanted to mention this because I think it's important for residents and all of you in Prescott Valley to realize that it's written right into the initiative that you will not be able to tell people they can't grow marijuana in your HOA rules, in your C and R's, as I may have seen that correctly. So, that, it would not allow that. So, you would have to allow people to grow marijuana. It does say that they have, the plants need to be not visible, but the problem is, is they're changing the penalties for things. So, if you do have visible plants, it's a petty offense. When I mentioned it's legal to have one ounce, if you have up to two and a half ounces, it's a petty offense. If you're a juvenile and you use marijuana, it's a, first, it's a civil offense. They're changing all of the laws, there's a whole section changing the penalties and it's going to be a huge change for law enforcement. This is another one I thought was important for you guys to realize that in, you know, like in California and Colorado, they have opt-out clauses where as a council, you could decide that you don't want to have recreational marijuana in your municipality, but that would not be allowed with our initiative because it says in the initiative that if you already have a medical marijuana business, you can't disallow recreational marijuana. So, in Yavapai County, almost every municipality either has a grow or a dispensary or whatever, so that would not allow you to opt out. It allows for public consumption. They were very clever when they wrote the initiative. They said you can't smoke marijuana in public, but again, most people don't smoke it anymore, they vape it. So, you'll be able to vape it in public, you'll be able to use edibles in public. And again, as, as somebody that's trying to prevent kids from using, that's very concerning. It allows for advertising. The only exception to that is it says you can't directly advertise to youth, which I guess the Bradshaw Mountain couldn't put it in their yearbook. I guess that's, that's what that's saying. But we're going to have these billboards and magazine ads and all of that all over the place. It's going to weaken our DUID laws. What, what the initiative says, and I'm going to just read this so I don't get it wrong, but that it, you cannot, you cannot have a DUI solely based on the, let's see, this is so sacred, sorry about that, on, on the, you know, like, so to do a test, like with alcohol, it's .08. You can't say that they have a certain level of THC and just charge them with the DUID just based on that. level of THC and just charge them with the DUID just based on that. Now, law enforcement can do that, but it would not allow that to happen just solely based on the level of THC in their system. This is really sad, too. It's going to make it so that our drug dogs are not going to be of any value, because it specifically says that the odor of marijuana cannot constitute reasonable articulable suspicion of a crime. So what that means is if they smell the marijuana, a drug dog, you would not be able to search the car. And we all know that when there's drug busts, it's not just marijuana in the car, it's, you know, it's a lot of times cocaine, these dangerous fentanyl pills, all of those things. So that's another sad thing for our state. And then we're very concerned about employee rights, because it's just going to end up with lawsuit after lawsuit, because, you know, of what's written into this initiative. It says that you can disallow an employee from using on your premise while they're working, but it doesn't say that for if they're, you know, they did it the day before. So myself, as somebody that employs health educators that go into the school, I would hate to think that I had somebody that was smoking marijuana one day, and then in the school the next day telling kids that they shouldn't, and still having, you know, that effect on them. So it's very concerning what's going to happen with employer rights. So I went through that really quick. I appreciate the time, but I just thought maybe I could answer any questions if you have about Matt Force, if you have about the Overdose Fatality Review Board, about the initiative, or anything else that you might be interested in.
Hi, ma'am.
Obviously, I have been involved for a long time. Mary Lee, I want to go back a few years to a meeting we had in Jerome, and we were thinking about disbanding. And I remember being very distraught. All I can think about is all the programs we would not now have that are saving lives if we had disbanded. And I want to thank you for your tenacity. She's very humble. She's won a lot of awards for her hard work and her dedication. We need to listen carefully to your messages. We need to protect this community. And we need to assist our Prescott Valley Police Department in being wise voters, because if we allow this to happen, their jobs are going to be so difficult.
Councilman?
There is so much that we have been learning in the last couple of years regarding marijuana, and to see the amount of people that are pushing to legalize recreational use. Just looking at the statistics that are coming out of Colorado should be enough to convince us that it's not a good idea. Now, I understand the mentality. I've had a couple of family members who were big into drugs, big into illegal use of drugs, and who have passed away as a result of it. So I'm very much, you know, aware of what it could do. And it disturbs me that this is even on the ballot. Medical marijuana, I could understand that. I've seen that. The part about medical marijuana that sometimes gets to me is, why don't they just take out the hallucinogenic drug and use the medicinal portion of the marijuana to help these people that have these conditions? But that's not happening anytime soon. But I really hope and pray that our citizens are smart enough to understand the risks that will be coming as a result of recreational use. Thank you for your presentation.
I just want to just close with, you know, we've had, from your numbers, 45 overdoses in Yavapai County. We've had 77 COVID deaths around the same, approximately the same time. And yet, we've closed schools, shut down our economy, and basically forced people into their homes. But yet, this is happening every single month. And we need to come up with a plan. And the plan needs to be more than sitting around a table saying, hey, how did this happen? Because that plan is not working. Because if it was working, we wouldn't be doubling the rate every year. I mean, just from a numbers point of view, we're up, I think you said 40%, and then up from 20% to previous year. So we just need to figure out, and it basically needs to come from like your voice, because your voice is a powerful voice. And then you can go and say, this may be the plan to help fix this. Let's give it a shot. If it doesn't work, what have we lost? Probably more lives. But yet, we can still keep trying, because when we do nothing, nothing gets done. So we need to come up with a plan and just try and try and try. And who knows? Eventually it may work. So I appreciate you coming, ma'am. There's a lot more work that needs to be done. Thank you.
Can I just say thank you to the Prescott Valley Police Department?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just, they've been just wonderful partners, and there's a lot of projects. You guys know about the Take Back of Prescription Drugs and so many other things that they help us with. And I just, I'm so grateful to them and all of our partners in Prescott Valley. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. And again, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item 3E, propose NAZ Sun's roadway name change.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the roadway segment between Glassford Hill Road and Main Street, adjacent to the Event Center, that leads to the Event Center, and it's currently called Northern Arizona Suns Way. Well, unfortunately, I think we're all aware, our team has left and they're not coming back. So we've had a public input into changing the name of that particular roadway to a different name. And that's what I'm here tonight, to get input from the council, some discussion on what council's ideas would be in order to change the roadway name. It can be done by resolution, by history. We did look back when it was originally built. It was Arena Boulevard. And then there was a push to have it named after the host team, so it was, you know, Sun Dogs Way when there was a hockey team, and changed to Northern Arizona Suns Way when there was a basketball team. So that's the history. It can be changed by a council resolution. And I guess the, any suggestions for roadway names, I know there's currently a social media campaign out there that the mayor's been leading, and I don't know what the input has been, but here tonight to just have discussion in any direction the council may have, the roadway name.
Thanks, Norm. I think, I think the key on this, and I'll just say for myself, I don't have a dock in this fight. I could care less what we call it, as long as it's not called NAZ Sun's Way. So I think Latoya, she did a great job on Facebook. She kind of started narrowing down the names that people have been throwing out there and who was voting for what. And this morning, she sent me a text, and it said, the top four that she had, that she was doing a poll off of, I don't know, have you seen it yet?
I haven't.
Said Entertainment Way was one, August Avenue, Liberty Lane or Liberty Way, and Arena Road. Those were, those were the ones that people had to choose from. And as of this, and there was a total of 500, 497 votes as of this morning. The number one that came out was Liberty Way or Liberty Lane with 213 votes, which was about 43%, followed by Arena Road, and then Entertainment Way. So again, I don't care. I don't have any interest in regards to which way it goes. Either way, it's going to be great. I don't care. And then I think council may have some other inputs on it, but I think they're all great, great names. And I understand where people are coming from with Liberty. It's close to Liberty School. And then especially around our times where you correlate Liberty with, you know, the American Way. So I understand that. And I also understand Arena Boulevard or however else we describe that road. So it doesn't really affect any businesses at this time, so I think that's definitely a bonus. So, council?
I particularly do not want to name it after any sports teams. It brings up bad memories. I'm going to speak for the citizens. I just spoke for myself. Actually, many of the citizens that I've spoken with, and have texted me and called me, they really want something patriotic. So I'm just sharing that with you.
Councilwoman?
I, myself, keep thinking if I have to write out the word Entertainment Way as part of my address, if I were to be a business there, that would be like a killer. But okay.
Councilman, Crossman?
I basically feel similar to what the mayor said, you know, anything but what a sports team's name specifically is. Let's, you know, I mean, personally, I like the Arena Way. But in your, in your discussion, you mentioned that the original name there was Arena Boulevard, which I wasn't even aware of. So it's nice to know that history, you know. For me, that would work. But yeah, I think it's great that we're putting it out to the citizens and let them pick, you know, this way, when they try to blame the council on it, they say, sorry, the town, you know, the community picked it out, you know, we have nothing to do with that. But it's, and the fact that we're engaging the community, I think it's a tremendous plus, you know. And if we name it Liberty, Liberty Way, people will have a certain amount of pride when they ride down that street. So I think it's a great thing to do, to, you know, let the winner of the, of the Facebook, you know, voting go on. Thank you.
Councilman?
Well, I feel obligated only because I've had several people mention it to me on Facebook. And I don't know, it must be the people that I deal with on Facebook. But I've had a lot of requests, people asking to be called Veterans Way. Again, I deal with VFW and American Legion a lot, so I've heard that. But Liberty Way might, in fact, solve that issue as well, although I kind of do like the idea that Liberty, that road does lead into Liberty for the school. So that makes perfect sense to me, too. You know, I, too, am just kind of tired of changing that name. I mean, they could call it B Street, and I'd be happy. I don't really care what we call it. But I'm getting kind of tired of naming it after the team that comes to town for a year and leaves. You know, I'm...
That's it.
Fair enough. Mr. Tarkowski?
If I could make a suggestion, why, why don't we consider having a voting effort with a starting date, an ending date, you put in the top six suggestions, and have the community go ahead and vote on that. And Mr. Davis could come back with the results of that, that would be not only on Facebook, but on all the social media platforms that the town is on, and in addition to that, in the print media. So then that way, you're getting a full view of people in the community that'll like to do that, very similar to what we did with the naming of Glassford Hill Road. That was an effort that went on. It was very specific. And actually, we have a staff person, a department head, that strongly objected to the name Glassford Hill Road in writing, because that particular individual worked for Yavapai County at the time. And there's a whole story behind that. But nevertheless, the highest vote getter was Glassford Hill Road, and here we are.
So, yeah, Norm, if you could just get with Latoya, maybe you and her can kind of spearhead that, and then everything kind of funnels through them, and we encourage them through the email and all other avenues that we communicate with people. There's not really a rush that we need to have it done by September 1st, so why not just take our time and...
Guidance for a timeline?
Yeah, I want to say maybe...
About the votes a month?
Give us an opportunity to at least get it in the newsletter. I think we might have went to print on September's newsletter. I'm not sure.
Why don't we have a goal of having this done by the 1st of November? Okay? So you're deliberate, you've got it in the town knows.
So then, yeah, we can absolutely make, for sure, make the newsletter for October, and then we could still encourage people from now until then to still run it. Like I said, her poll on Facebook is working well, and then she can just add probably any emails she should get or any other correspondence. So, and then we just come back in November, and we'll just go from there.
Thank you. I got clear direction. Thank you, council.
Mr. Davis, thank you.
Easy, didn't it?
With that being said, folks, item four, time to adjourn. Thank you for coming out.